Good afternoon. It is now five thirty. I'd like to call the Calhoun County, September eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting to order. Ms. Martin, would you give us the indication, please, ma'am?
Father, in obedience to your word, we make intercession on behalf of those who are in positions of authority in our city, county, state, and nation so that we can live peaceful and quiet lives marked by godliness and dignity. We pray for our city, county, state, and nation. Amen.
Ma'am, may I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I make a motion that we amend the agenda to allow a representative from Solar Farm Group from Fort Mott to speak under appearances.
Second.
Properly moving second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, likewise?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
The nays have it. The motion is denied. We have a motion for approval of the rest of the agenda.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Properly moving second that we approve the agenda as is. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, likewise, the ayes have it. Uh, John, do we have anybody for public comments?
Yes, sir. Uh, this nine I'm at.
I appreciate your letting me come and speak again tonight because I along with many of my friends and neighbors in Calvin County.
Ms. Mack, I'm gonna allow that this time, but we don't allow you to continuously come and speak, but I'll allow it tonight since so many people are interested in that. And would you identify yourself and tell us where you live at?
I am not a bad, and I'm a resident and property owner in Fort Mott.
Okay.
I'm a resident of Calvin County.
Okay.
And I ask that you extend us the courtesy of hearing our concerns and that you consider passing the five amendments that we have presented to you. The First Amendment concerns the provision for setbacks from schools, hospitals, churches, and residences. And this provision provides that the measurement is strong if any existing built structure on the property. Well, the ordinance is ambiguous because it doesn't say what a structure is. Can a structure be a deer stand? Can a structure be a pump house? Can a structure be a shed? Or is the structure the boundary residence? Another reason there's a problem with this is that our rural homeowners are affected, our rural homeowners will have their setbacks measured from a structure on the property, whereas residents of the county in platted subdivisions or incorporated areas are five hundred feet from the boundary. That's the difference. That's not fair. This is a built-in prejudice to rural homeowners. So I ask that that amendment be passed. The Second Amendment we asked for is that it is a requirement of two hundred and fifty feet for residences and commercial areas. There's no mention of agricultural lands. It's very interesting, I find, that this solar ordinance mentions hospitals, protects hospitals. Now, do we have a hospital in Calvin County? But it does not mention agricultural lands. What about the setback on agricultural lands? There's another ambiguity that needs to be corrected in the ordinance. So we ask that Amendment Number Two be passed. Amendment Number Three, we are advised by the Deputy Administrator that this amendment is already in the ordinance. The way I read it, I do not see it at all. So we ask that if the administration approves of the Amendment Number Three, that they go ahead and put the language in and make it explicit that subsections C of the buffer requirements, that subsection C also require an eight-foot O-Pay year-round O-Pay book. Amendment Number Four is the one we've talked about before about insurance coverage. Without this coverage, we may not have pollution claims covered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mack. Anybody else doing it?
Ms. Janet Echols?
Ms. Echols? Ms. Echols? We need you to come onto the podium and go ahead.
Uh, my name is Janet Echols, and I am a citizen of Calvin County. I live in St. Matthews. And I am thankful for the county council to hear what we have to say tonight. Amendment Four in Mrs. Mack's amendments. Amendment Four, this amendment would require solar companies to purchase pollution coverage as an added coverage. Without this coverage, the insurance company may deny pollution claims. This coverage not only protects the landowner contracting with the solar company, it also protects the county. Most of all, it protects the community. There is no downside to having the solar company purchase and pay for extra coverage. Amendment Five, this amendment would require the solar companies to comply with the state and federal pollution law regulation and regulations. The solar ordinance already requires solar companies to comply with the National Electric Code and the International Building Code. Even if the pollution laws were enforced by DHEC rather than the county, inclusion of these laws would put the solar companies on notice that the companies that compliance is expected. Adding the other laws and regulations would only make the construction and operation of the solar installation a safer and more secure industrial site. These amendments are straightforward. Adoption of these amendments will make for an ordinance that is more clear and less ambiguous, more protective of the Calvin County residents. And I have to say that Mrs. Mack and her husband, Mr. Mack, have put lots of time into this, and they are here to represent the community, not to represent themselves, and with people of great integrity. And I would urge you to do her the courtesy of hearing what she has to say, but also voting on this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Helen Harvey Luffy?
I too am a Calvin County resident, living in Fort Mott, and I just love Calvin County. I just urge you to get more stringent with this solar ordinance so that we are not regretting these facilities twenty years down the road. I think we're, you can see our grounds swell of people that love our county, that love our farmland, that feel very strongly that that we might be short-sighted and we might need more stringent ordinance. And we've come, we've come again and again, and are very, very serious about really wanting a more stringent ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Luther Willemecker?
I have nothing to add except that I'm vigorous to support the last three speakers.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Mr. Redd Tabor?
How are you all doing?
All right, how you doing?
Um, the county's come a long way and put forth a lot of-
Redd, Mr. Tabor, would you mind identifying yourself and tell for you live at?
I'm sorry. Uh, the county's come a long way. His orders, his riches worked hard on. These amendments that we would like to add to, there's nothing in it to stop a solar farm coming to Calvin County. These are all reasonable requests. The time is running out, and let's get it right this time. We only have one swing this time. Let's get it right the first time. If we need more time, there's nothing wrong. Within a few weeks, we can motor and get this paper right. And I ask six months or just whatever it takes to get this thing right. Like, two weeks, three weeks, whatever. This is all of Calvin County, it's not the Fort Mott. It's where every citizen in Calvin County. So let's take the time and get it right this first time. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Dennis Philby?
Good morning, Councilman. My name is Dennis Philby. I live in Sandy Run up in Calvin County. I had nothing to do with Fort Mott, so that's neither here nor there. There's two things I want to talk about. Number one is Sandy Run, don't worry. Running track, racetrack, whatever you want to call it. The other day, somebody told me that they were letting dogs run loose up there now. Uh, they put a playground in so children can be there. What they're missing is a fence. The last I must hear, which was about a month ago, there was no fence, and there's been no action since. It's incumbent on you to understand that if something does happen, and something will happen, knowing kids and animals, that the county's going to be liable for that. That's it. The other thing I did want to mention is this. You have on the new business, the Sandy Run Department ladder truck. What I would like to hear when you talk about that is the initial cost of the ladder truck, the current cost of ladder truck. I've been told that it's gone up significantly. I would like to hear those numbers and justification for that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, John. Have a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Properly moving second that we approve the August twentieth, twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, likewise, the ayes have it. Uh, down to committee reports. The executive committee, Ken, you want to make that report?
Yeah, I'll make that report. Um, there have been some changes in the boards at the Regional Medical Center. Um, we, James and I are the executive committee for the, for the council. And we met with our representatives on what is the Legacy Board? Is that what it's called?
Right.
Legacy Board. And that is Ms. Cynthia Keller and Mr. Steve Tyson. That board is being dissolved, and I, we had an out briefing from them telling us kind of what had been going on with that. Uh, I want to say thank you both to Ms. Keller and Mr. Tyson for the job that they have done in representing us over there. I think there was some stuff in the media that maybe was questionable, but at the same time, they have out briefed us on it and given us a better understanding of what, of what actually transpired over there.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I thought that was just general information for the public. Orangeburg and Calvin County jointly own the hospital, and, uh-
Could I add one more thing?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
One thing that I had not thought, can y'all hear me? I didn't have my microphone on, uh, but I speak, I generally speak louder. Um, one thing, can y'all hear me now without it? Okay. One thing that had never crossed my mind, um, the, the partnership or marriage or whatever it is between TRMC and MUFC does not dissolve completely TRMC. This was the first time that I had really considered this, that what we have is a situation where MUFC has leased the hospital for the next ninety-nine years. But in order to, for it to be a lease, you must have an entity that it's being leased from. So that means that for the next ninety-nine years, TRMC will be the leaseholder or whatever for the hospital and has to maintain that lease and has to have somebody on board to do it. And that is one of the things that I, I actually learned through this meeting because, or through the finding out about the meeting, was that I had not really crossed my mind that we still will have to maintain a, a, a board or whatever to ma, to manage that lease for the next ninety-nine years. And certainly, I don't plan on being here ninety-nine years from now, and neither do I expect, um, Ms. Keller or Mr. Tyson to be here that long. But certainly, we will, I mean, their board is gone, but this does put it back home to, what's the other board? Constituent Board? The constituent-
Citizen Advisory Board.
Citizen Advisory Board will have to be maintained in order to maintain that lease. That's all I wanted to bring out to the public.
Okay. Maybe you alluded to that, Ken, maybe I wasn't, but I'd also like to thank Ms. Keller and Mr. Tyson for their service on that board, because they served on the previous board. Uh, they're not compensated really for what they do, and we appreciate them for what they did. So again, thank you all for what you, uh, you did. Uh, any other committee reports? Hearing none, uh, we go to appearances. Uh, Mr. Mark Breaman, penny sales tax update.
Good afternoon, Council. Here to bring you the Calvin County penny cell tax update. Again with Calvin County Cameron Waterline, still in design, acquisition of land. We spent two hundred and seventy-one thousand out of two million, out of, um, out of the budget. Cameron Historical Depot, deals due September fifteenth. That's the train depot in Cameron that they're going to remodel. We spent twenty-seven thousand four hundred. Sandy Run Fire District Substation, their architectural layout is completed. They're in the site design, which is fifty percent complete now. So that's fourteen thousand of the two hundred and forty-seven thousand. Sandy Run Ladder Truck. The Sandy Run Fire District has found a ladder truck in another state that they're in negotiations or purchasing. The penny cell tax is five hundred thousand. The ladder truck comes in around, they've negotiated down to five hundred and thirty-five thousand, which requires a twenty-five percent deposit plus shipping. The shipping, I think, is around four thousand to get here. The St. Matthews demolition all has been completed. Three hundred and seventy-three thousand of five hundred and forty-five. Lake Inspiration, work is in progress, eighty percent complete. They have some playground and bathroom needs to be completed. Three hundred and ninety-four thousand has been spent of five hundred and twenty-five thousand. Animal Shelter, the architectural drawing has been completed. Um, the RFPs went out this morning. It closes at ten, it closes on October seventeenth at two P.M. We're getting the biz in for that. So far, we spent thirteen thousand of the hundred thousand. St. Matthew's Streetscape, FR Huff has been rescheduled by DOT to get resurfaced. The Pocket Pop has ninety percent complete. They have to come back and do some restoring, and Guard Rail is completed. We have two hundred and fifty-five thousand of the four hundred and twenty thousand has been spent. The Public Safety, St. Matthews Public Safety and Renovation, Town Hall's eighty percent complete. They have some minor things in the bathroom inside Town Hall and some other things complete. Of the two hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and eighty thousand have been spent. Cameron Downtown demolition is completed. They have spent forty-six thousand of the two hundred and fifty thousand. Calvin County Emergency Communications has been completed. Five hundred thousand budget that just came in at five oh five. Calvin Amalance, project has been completed. It came in under budget, a hundred and ninety. It was a hundred and seventy-seven that we spent. The Sandy Run Pumper Tanker has been ordered. We made a deposit on it. It's lead time is twenty-four to twenty-eight months. We ordered it on November fifteenth of two thousand, of twenty-twenty-two. So we still have approximately another twelve months to, before it comes in. Total cost was five hundred and forty-nine thousand, which is a hundred and seventy-nine over budget of the three hundred and seventy. Sandy Run Recreation, opening and upgrades of Haywood Parks completed. Sandy Run Sports Complex completed. Um, we spent sixty-five thousand of a hundred thousand. Calvin County Waterline, Carolina Lane and Staple Hills have been completed. We're looking at some other county water lines and roads to complete. We spent ninety-five thousand of the four hundred thousand, and some penny cell tax administration costs of five thousand dollars we've spent. I believe everybody up there has a copy. Do you have any questions?
Anyone have any questions, uh, Mr. Breaman? Mark, I just wanted to ask you one thing. I see, let me commend you all to start with, because most of these projects came in under budget. We didn't, I saw two I thought on there that was over budgeted.
Yeah.
Uh, so I want to commend you on your following up on that. How about our monies that we had left over out of, uh, those particular budgets? What happens to that now?
At the end of the six years, the money that hasn't been spent will go into the county accounts to do other projects that need to use.
Okay.
And, um, anybody else that has any other questions?
Any other questions?
You got a copy? Because I don't have a copy.
I'll give you one, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And I would like to thank the town of Cameron, Mayor Summers, Town Council, and his staff. I also would like to thank the town of St. Matthews, Mayor Carson, the Town Council and her staff. These towns have worked diligently on their prospective towns projects with penny sales tax. Thanks to the county administration and its staff for their work on the projects nearing completion. Also thank the county council for having the foresight to seek the penny cell tax referendum. And I would like to also thank the residents of Calvin County for voting yes on the penny cell tax referendum. If not for them entrusting the county with their opinions, none of these projects would have happened. And we're looking forward to the next penny cell tax referendum and making it bigger and better for our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, uh, Mr. Breaman. And the resolutions, uh, we have a resolution honoring Ms. Debbie Roland.
Yes, sir. A resolution honoring Ms. Deborah Roland, whereas Ms. Deborah, Debbie Roland retired from Calvin County on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three after serving as an employee for forty-four years. And whereas Debbie Roland showed unparalleled dedication as the director of the Calvin County Museum and Cultural Arts Center from nineteen eighty-four to twenty twenty-three. And whereas the Calvin County Museum grew vastly and improved greatly under Ms. Roland's leadership. And whereas her outstanding work was made evident in the museum receiving numerous awards from South Carolina Federal Federation of Museums and Confederation of South Carolina Local Historical Societies. And whereas the museum won the nineteen ninety-four to ninety-five Elizabeth O'Neill Verner Award for Outstanding Contributions to the Arts in South Carolina. And whereas she was named to the South Carolina Community Scholar, a recipient of the state A.S. Sally Professional Award, a Reader for Doctor Walter Edgar, State and Local Board Member, and many other honors. And whereas, as the museum director, Ms. Roland implemented and hosted numerous events the community looks forwards, looks forward to and cherishes. And whereas Ms. Debbie Roland has taught and trained those that will continue the legacy and greatness of the Calvin County Museum and Cultural Center. And whereas her influence, dedication, and diligence to the community is constantly displayed, and she was named the nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine Citizen of the Year by the St. Matthews Rotary Club. And now, therefore, be it resolved, Calvin County Council, a political subdivision of the state of South Carolina, congratulates Ms. Debbie Roland on her retirement and will continue to support the great work of Debbie Roland in salute of her years of honorable service. Be it further resolved, this eleventh day of September twenty twenty-three, a copy of this resolution shall be spread across the permanent records written in Calvin County.
John, can you go up and give someone up?
It was an island, sorry. I love this county. And I hope as y'all continue, um, to look, to make changes in the county, that you will continue to remember archaeological studies that are so important as, as we grow, so that those things are not overlooked. The cemeteries and the cultural development is one of the things that economic development looks for when they're going somewhere here. And I love the dear people, these dear hearts and gentle people that live in my hometown. And that's all. Thank you.
Ms. Debbie? Just, Debbie, just one minute before you leave. I think some of the council want to make comments.
Ms. Debbie, I feel like you are the bones of that museum. You've been there since I was a little girl. And the, I remember the highlight, like, of our, the field trip that I always looked forward to every year with school. We went to the museum every year, and that was the highlighted field trip of my year. I'll never forget how you made me feel every field trip, pointing out that that was my great-great-grandmother's dress when we first walked in. That was the first exhibit you showed everybody to every time. And I was always so excited for you to point that out to me. I'll never forget that memory of you.
Any other council members like coming? Debbie, well, I've been with you a long time, I guess, since the beginning, almost, and I appreciate the job. Really appreciate the job that you've done, yes. So, so we'll still be holling at you, so to speak, but appreciate the job you did. Thank you, ma'am.
I just want to say thank you, Ms. Debbie, for everything. I came in, stayed kind of late and everything else, but thank you for all the work you've did through all, all the years and the training that you've got, the people that's there, that you've left it with in good hands, so.
And can you die? Because didn't you take a check?
I did, but now I didn't give him a record.
Oh, yeah. That's right. I think I do have photographs and a video of that.
I'm sure.
And, and from my standpoint, of course, I know, I've known Debbie since she was a little girl. And, um, so she, she didn't, I mean, it was a family thing back in those days when I was dating her cousin across the street. But that being said, uh, I also would like to speak, I, I, and I don't know whether the school district has done anything or, uh, or not, but on behalf of myself and council, you've done an excellent job. But also, the years that we worked together in the school district, both while I was principal at John Ford and superintendent of the school district, were just tremendous opportunities for our students to get hands-on experience and get a learning environment that was very friendly to them. Thank you very much, Debbie.
Thank you. And if you seem it's just an extension from your door, educational, as much as you allow for it to happen. And I can't take credit for anything, people of this county and statewide, for what made this happen. We started out with a teeny tiny little budget. We still have a not huge budget, but, um, we went from, um, small things to big things, and it only works if you continue. And I hope you'll continue to support the museum. Remember, the cultural center, what an art center, it was a cultural center that was added so the economic development would have a facility to come to and that kind of stuff. So, thank you. It's been a great journey. And I've got two little ones here that came from Charleston. I know they've got to be tight.
Well, thank, Ms. Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you. Thank you for all you've done.
And I love being retired.
Okay.
This is my family going with me. And thank you, everybody, for the nice cards and letters and different things that I have received. I've been overwhelmed with hundreds of things that have been sent to me. I'm extremely humbling. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. We got down to the, uh, no more resolutions. Uh, we down to old business, uh, vehicle policy.
Ms., you ready for motion?
Yes, we're gonna take a motion on the vehicle.
Mr. Chairman, how move we adopt the vehicle policy as presented to us by the administration?
We have a second.
Second.
Properly moving second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose is likewise?
No.
The ayes have it. Okay. Anything else under old business? Nothing else under old business? Uh, down to new business, we have the grant award to purchase of property for economic development.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to bring this to you tonight. Uh, this is a grant offered by the Department of Commerce for Economic Development. It's called a readiness grant. It's for properties that counties, municipalities already own and are ready to develop. This property, uh, we applied for the grant, um, once before and got denied. We applied for it again and was approved, and it's three hundred thousand dollars in order to buy right at seven acres to purchase clear grade and grub. Uh, the intent, uh, obviously, uh, this is right in front of the Calhoun Industrial Park on frontage, on the signetag frontage road at the very end. Uh, and this is something that would benefit the industrial park. It's also interstate frontage, and, uh, it's our desire to talk with Tri-County Electric Co-op and the power team about development. Uh, so I'd like to ask your permission to move forward with that, please, sir.
So what, we need a simple motion to, um?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, allow the administration to accept the grant award and purchase property at the current industrial site.
Second.
Property moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose is likewise?
No.
The ayes have it.
Number two is approval of the Sandy Run Fire Department ladder truck. And number three is approval of the Sandy Run Fire Department service truck. Both of these trucks have gone in front of the Sandy Run Fire Department for approval and has been approved. Um, the, let's start with the ladder truck. We've been looking for a number of years, uh, for a ladder truck that we can afford and one that would suit the needs of the Sandy Run service area. Uh, not just industrial, certainly that's primarily where we're going to need the ladder, but there are other applications that can be used for. Through the years, we haven't found anything in the new category, but there are a lot of used trucks out there that have very low mileage, uh, aren't used that much. Uh, and so, uh, I want to thank Christian Wolf and his guys for actually, uh, tracking this down because they've done the research to get us here. So what we're asking for, this is penny sales rights, okay? We have a half a million dollars in the penny sales tax to buy a ladder truck. The ladder truck that they've looked at and have approved is a used twenty-ten Pierce mid-mount platform ladder truck. A number of the folks there in Sandy Run have gone down to look at this truck. Uh, we have, like Mr. Briggman had said in his report, we have, they were able to get them down to five hundred and thirty-five thousand, uh, for the truck with a twenty-five percent deposit, uh, needed, uh, to hold it. The delivery on this truck will not be until mid, end of twenty twenty-four, and that's because this station is actually ordering a new one, and we have to wait until that comes in to replace it. There'll also be about a four thousand dollar delivery fee, uh, and the, the overage there between the half a million and the roughly five hundred and forty thousand, uh, we'll be able to cover that difference when that time comes, okay? So can I have an approval for the ladder truck we can get with, please?
Can I, can I ask a question, Christian?
Yes, sir.
Um, when we make our twenty-five percent deposit, this truck is in service. So if, if anything changes in its condition or whatever, have we got, um, something in, in, in there that says that they have to keep it in the same condition that we get it, I mean, that we've seen so far?
Yeah, so, uh, and I'm, I'm not a lawyer, but down if you want. But anyway, so it does, it does spell out, it's actually being, it's in Sherman, Texas, which is where we, we went down and took four, uh, myself, I R G, uh, our captain also is a mechanic, uh, working on diesel, the MTL, and, uh, took somebody, um, one of our members that actually is from Lexington County. He worked in the county fire service. Um, he's a citizen training officer with us and has paralegal experience because that's something we do, it's, it's a learning thing for us. We haven't had a need for it. Well, we've had a need, but we haven't had the money to do it. Um, so we're, we're gonna have to start taking stuff. But anyways, um, yeah, so it's, it's, it's in service, but I use that term loosely. It's a backup, backup. Um, they have, they, they've got plenty of money down there. Money's no issue. Um, so they have, um, uh, two ladder trucks that's being used ahead of it, and they're waiting on their third one to come in, um, and they're actually, so pretty much what is being used now is for no fires. It goes out on Sundays. Every Sunday it does go get pump tested, you know, to keep everything going. They had actually just done a ton of work, uh, pretty close to a hundred thousand dollars worth of upgrades or, um, uh, it's a torque converter, am I right, Rick?
Torque.
Uh, torque box. Torque box, um, which is about five hundred thousand dollars, what actually makes the ladder spin. It's got a brand on it. Um, and I've got all the sales, the records, um, they kept very meticulous, uh, service records on it and looked at that. Um, it's a, it's a very nice truck, um, for what it is. Um, it's not brand new, but to answer, uh, Mr. Spillings' question earlier, a new one is about two point one million dollars. Um, and that was when we looked at it a year ago. I'm sure they've gone up to probably around two point three now, I had to guess. And that's a stripped-down truck. That's no equipment. So, and, and John, Richard, and myself, we've talked about this a little bit, coming forward, you know, equipment stuff and how ways we can try to accommodate that when the time comes, but this is definitely a step. The reality is, the big building that's going up, it, it requires a big truck, and that's where we are now. Um, big truck, big water because we're gonna catch on fire, and we gotta have something that can get that. And that's what we're, we're intending this truck to do. And, uh, certainly capable of it, and, uh, we appreciate y'all taking the time to, to hear us out and, uh, consider it, and if there's anything else, I'd be happy to answer from the best of my heart.
Let me, let me just get a motion before we, uh, go into further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we allow Sandy Run Fire Department to purchase the ladder truck in Texas that they've looked at.
Second.
Property moving second. Now, do we have any further discussion? Anybody else like to comment? Christian, I just want to say, good job. Y'all did a great job. I appreciate, appreciate what you did there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, sir, um.
Let me hold on. Yes, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose is likewise, the ayes have it. Okay. Again, thank y'all.
All right, sir. The next one is the, uh, the, the approval of the Sandy Run, uh, service truck. Uh, currently, they have a, a service truck that runs out and does just that. It services their engines and the other, uh, vehicles that they have with the fire department there. Uh, of course, with the, with the interstate coverage that they have and the demand that they have, they, they, they are in need of this service truck. They have requested the approval, uh, to spend twenty-five thousand dollars on a two thousand and seven American La France, uh, service truck. This twenty-five thousand dollars will be taken from the Sandy Run fund balance, uh, but they are wanting your approval for that.
Motion for approval, and then we'll do, then we'll do discussion.
Make a motion.
Property moving second. Now, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose is likewise, the ayes have it. Okay.
Counsel, Chair of the House, thank y'all.
Okay.
We, uh, this is greatly needed equipment, and, uh, you'll, you'll see it on the interstate and running up and down the roads to, to go to the emergency.
Again, we appreciate what you all doing and what you did to save us that money, uh, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, we need to thank you, and thank you for all you do.
Thank y'all.
All right. No more new business? Now, we down to ordinances. Uh, twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, second reading. An ordinance to adopt amendments to the Calhoun County zoning ordinance by removing residential solar installations from Article Seven, replace Section Seven dash thirteen with update requirements and update related tables for conditional use and special exceptions.
Yes, sir. Chairman, I'm going to ask Deputy Administrator Hall to come up and explain.
Good evening, Chairman, Council. Um, so, second reading of the ordinance, um, and we, we've had several speakers here tonight. You guys received an email with the same, uh, information, um, from Ms. Mack. This has been about a four and a half or five month process that we've been going through this. I would like to just address the, the five amendment, uh, request, um, briefly. And, and let me, let me step back one by saying, the existing solar ordinance is about a half a page or three quarters of a page. We've drawn to a much more robust, uh, in-depth ordinance, about five pages. Um, so actually done quite a bit of work here. So the first one, the setbacks, uh, current setbacks in the existing ordinance are fifty feet. Um, and, and what we've settled on is two hundred and fifty feet. Four of the five amendment requests that you've heard tonight, we have already received, discussed. All of this has been through the planning commission. Um, we've kind of settled out where we are. I don't think anybody's a hundred percent happy with it. I feel like it's a pretty good compromise. Um, second, the comment to the hospitals, that's a generic language that's pulled from zoning. We could have deleted it, um, but just left it in there. Once again, this has to do with setbacks and the difference between, um, different types of uses. Um, this has also been reviewed by the planning commission and staff, and this is where we settled out at. Five hundred feet was thrown out. Five hundred feet, if you think about a large-scale solar farm, several hundred acres, um, two hundred and fifty feet, um, you know, eats up acreage. Five hundred feet eats up more acreage. So you're, you're talking about taking even, you're, you're talking about taking more farmland out of use because you now need more land to do the same amount of solar. You know, you're developing an eight hundred acre parcel, you're putting solar panels on five hundred acres of it. If you need to put solar panels on six hundred acres of it to get the same output, you've not really done anything. The, the major, extremely stringent buffer requirements we have will ameliorate that. The third, um, item, I think there's a problem with maybe, uh, versions, um, the eight-foot height is in there. I verified in your council packet that you got last week, uh, to make sure that there wasn't a problem. The eight-foot height was approved by the planning commission and is in your council packet as part of the zoning approval. Um, four, the insurance coverage, you should have received a letter in your packet from the county attorney. Honestly, I think, Mr. and Ms. Mack, I had no concept of pollution legal liability coverage whatsoever. Didn't know anything about it, so I said, sure, let's, let's look at the language. Uh, county attorney, for the reasons stated in the memo to you, has advised us against putting that in there. So you've got that information there on why that's not in there. Um, number five, uh, N P S permitting EPA guidelines, guidance documents, as Ms. Echol pointed out, following up on Ms. Mack, um, those are federal, um, passed down, some of it's passed down to D HAC to enforce, some of it's kept at the federal level. The reason why we have the National Electric Code in there and other building codes in there is we're required to adopt those at the local level. So we enforce those at the local level. The, the federal D HAC requirements, we don't copy, basically copy and paste the federal or D HAC requirements into our ordinance. We can't enforce them, we don't have the ability to do so. They will have to meet any of those standards. Honestly, I'm familiar with N P S permitting, I'm not familiar with it applied to a solar farm. My initial, my guess is that N P S isn't impacted by this. Uh, several provisions of Clean Water Act are covered under, uh, D HAC's stormwater permitting. Um, those items would absolutely apply to this, um, but that's the reason why that staff doesn't think that it needs to be added in there. Those are the five items there. Like I said, this is going to the planning commission, it's been approved by the planning commission unanimously, um, brought to you. I, I, I would like to say that Fortmont community has been very helpful, um, great to work with, um, a lot of input, obviously a lot of care and concern, um, and while, you know, we don't necessarily meet exactly in the middle on who wants what, it, it's been a good process, and I think what we've got is, is a pretty good compromise here. So, um, that's all I have. Unless you have any other questions.
No, let me get a motion. But, go ahead, go ahead.
Chairman, I move that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, second reading.
We have a second. We have a second.
I'll second.
Property moving second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, ask for a two-week extension so I can get with Richard and talk about some of this stuff that Ms. Nina presented to us, and I talked to you last week about it, but I'd like to follow up with that to make sure that what we've talked about and what they proposed with five things, that we definitely can, see if we can do with that. So I'd like to.
Let me ask you something, uh, Richard on, on that. Do you need two weeks until the next council meeting?
Well, I don't want to do a third reading until I talk to him. Let's do a second reading at the next council meeting, is what I would be asking for.
Are you asking to postpone the second reading?
It's the second reading, if that's what it takes, yeah, I don't mind.
Well, you got a motion to approve?
We got a motion on the floor, all in favor of, uh, passing second reading, aye?
Aye.
Oppose is likewise, the ayes have it. Let me just say to the Fortmont community also that we're not trying to ram anything down your throat. I mean, these guys worked on this thing a long time, um, and we'll talk with you. I mean, we still have the last reading, uh, to Ms. Mack. I knew you put in late to, um, get on the agenda. I don't want to start a policy like that, a policy, you have to be in a certain amount of time. If I be lenient for you, I'll have to do it for the next person to come along also. And I knew we had another reading to come up, and we got another meeting. So you still can put in any time, and we still will hear you. Uh, so we're not trying to ram anything down your throats. I want you to know that. But, um, the council has a job to do, and we got opposing sides, and we have to make up our individual minds on what we're gonna do. And so, again, like I say, if you all have some more comments and want to come back, we'll be glad to hear them before the last final reading. We've not passed it yet, we just passed second reading. And, uh, so we'll, you know, we'll, if somebody want to get on the agenda, you, I think, if, John, could you tell them the timeframe, so if somebody want to, want to speak on that?
When is it by noon?
When is it by noon?
Before the next, before the next meeting.
So we let you know, some people said they didn't know, so we let you know if you want to get, because we'll hear you. I try to be as open as, as I possibly can down here. Uh, I'm not going to agree with you all the time, but I'll be open and I'll hear you. So thank you all for, um, thank you all for coming, and thank you for participating in the, uh, in the meeting. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, first reading, an ordinance to amend the Calhoun County Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration's Article Four, Boards and Commission, Division Six, Orangeburg Calhoun Regional Hospital. John, you want to just explain a little bit about that, so people know what we're talking about there with that one?
Yes, sir. Um, this is first reading by title only, uh, but, uh, this is, uh, as was discussed earlier by Councilman Westbury, uh, M U S C and R M C, they're still talking. Uh, the Legacy Board has been dissolved, and like, uh, Councilman Westbury said, there has to be somebody overseeing the lease on behalf of R M C. And so this is revising the ordinance to reflect that, to terminate the current board and to put together, uh, the new commission, that'll be a new commission to oversee.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt twenty twenty-three dash eighteen.
Second.
Property moving second, that we adopt our ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, first reading. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose is likewise, the ayes have it. Okay, we down to Administrator. John, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. Two things, uh, I want to thank staff, I want to thank citizens for being aware of the storm a week and a half ago. Certainly, uh, we were fortunate, uh, but I do thank staff for all their preparation, their meetings, uh, having the conference calls to make sure, and aggravated calls from media at night, uh, so I want to thank them for that. And then, uh, I want to remind everybody, uh, please attend the September twenty-second, uh, Sports Complex grand opening. That's the recreational complex, uh, that we've been working on for a while now. Certainly would love to have you at ten o'clock on September twenty-second. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm, that's, that's all I have.
Okay.
What day is that on?
Friday.
Okay. Uh, Administrator, having gotten finished with the administration, um, I take a motion that we adjourn.
Can I make one? Uh, we got a good turnout based, for just the solar.
Yes, sir.
Want to make sure that everybody who's turned out for the solar understands that we are in the process of, um, working on the zoning for the whole part of the county, and we do have meetings. Richard, how do they meet?
Monthly, if there's something on the agenda, um, for zoning, there'll be a lot of meetings, but that's a while yet.
Well, that's a while, but at the same time, if we could get people who are, who are not aware to be aware that, that they do have a chance at this point to put input into our zoning ordinance so that you come back for those meetings and, and get, uh, get your input recorded there too, because that's to be big. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, nothing else, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Property moving, I have a second.
Second.
Property moving second that we adjourn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses likewise, the ayes have it. Press have anything it can get with the administrator, either if you need me, I'll be here for a couple of minutes.